Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman, and I want to welcome you to the November 9th, 2023, public hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. I would like to have you check your cellphones and either put them on mute or turn them off, if you would please, on that. This is an open, public meeting and is being videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public and local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The number of commission members present is seven. It will require a majority vote of those present to pass a motion. Members of the public, when called upon, are required to state their name for the record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date if necessary. Would like to welcome council member Cantelli here, council-elect members Forworth—did I pronounce that right?
Bruer.
Bruer, okay. And Mr. Gambogi here. Better than some names I've been called, you know. I will have—staff members will introduce themselves when they make presentations. The applicant will introduce themselves when they make presentations. And now the council—commission members will introduce themselves. Susan, would you like to start?
Good morning. My name is Susan Graham.
Good morning. My name is James Whiting.
Good morning. I'm Tom Hutchison. Nice to see you all.
Tom Riley.
A lot of politicians say they're not politicians, but to be here—for me to be here today truly shows that I'm not a politician. This is Ted Gambogi.
Good morning. Jim Kloszuski.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the October 26, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
First, we'd ask for corrections.
I'll do that. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If no corrections, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman. I still move.
I'll second. Tom Riley.
We have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, Sarah, would you call them? Approved.
Commissioner Graham.
Approved.
Commissioner Riley.
Approved.
Commissioner Whiting.
Approved.
Commissioner Hutchison.
I'm going to recuse myself because I wasn't part of this.
Commissioner Kloszuski.
I have to stand—I was not at the last meeting.
Commissioner Michaelman.
Approved.
Passes 5-0.
Next on the agenda is SUP 23-002, a special use permit to allow for the construction of an 80-foot wireless tower next to an existing water tank, which is a request to exceed the allowed height limitation for zoning district of 35 feet. Location is 3599 Williamson Valley Road, APN 800-20-034S, zoning rural estate, two-acre, RE 2-acre. Applicant is Smart Link Communications LLC. Tammy.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. Tammy Dewett, community planner. The proposed location is adjacent to north of an adjacent water tank on a property owned by the Arizona State Land Department. The access is off of Williamson Valley Road. It's already existing road, and they'll be improving it to get their equipment up there and be able to maintain their equipment. There will be no changes to the way the road is already there on the property except to improve it. This is outside the impore-influence area, so it's not required to be lighted. At the last meeting with the 100-foot tower, the airport director at the time had asked that if they could possibly light it, and they agreed. But with an 80-foot tower that's being proposed now, it's not required to be lighted. The property that this was going on, it's 204 acres. The water tank is approximately 1,000 feet from the southern property line. And then there's an open space tract that's 400 feet from that property—400 feet wide from that property line. So the nearest resident is about 1,400 feet from the property line—from the water tank, sorry. And then it's about 1,800 feet from the proposed cell tower. To the north of Pioneer Parkway is another Arizona State Land Department property, 225 acres. To the west, on the other side of Williamson Valley Road, that's state trust land, too. And to the east, it's a BLM 79-acre parcel. This is the map that shows you the opposition that was provided in your packet. It was about 33 people, which represented about 25 parcels. And this will be updated with the additional letters and stuff, that information that we have received. Here's the imagery of the property and where the proposed site's going to—proposed cell tower's going to go. Just north of the water tank, it's about 400 feet from the existing water tank on the downward side of the hill. This is a rendering of the proposed now. It's 80 feet, not 80 stories, as some people have said. So it's a proposed at 80 feet, which is 20 feet lower than what was proposed before. It's going to propose to be a monopole, which is less intrusive for visually. It could be painted a neutral color to be considered stealth and be able to blend into the background with a water tank and such in the background. The SUP process allows for council approval of tower heights that excess of the district allowance. In this instance, the RE 2-acre district has a height limit of 35 feet, which is—35 feet is our standard for all residential zoning districts. The requested 80-foot wireless tower would require a specific council approval as part of the SUP approval. And here are some recommended actions if you choose to move it forward today. And that will conclude my presentation today. And I want to defer to the applicant to address the questions that you asked them at the last meeting and any—to try to address the information that's been provided to you since yesterday.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy. Also, I'd like to welcome Mayor Good attending here. Thank you, sir. Tammy, I want to confirm, the only thing that we are looking at here is a height exception.
Correct.
We are not looking at anything else. We're not looking at placement, just the height and what the tower looks like.
Correct.
Okay. Matt, would you like to give a little tutorial on the federal law concerning this?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. Not quite used to keeping my finger pushed on the button. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, we went through it somewhat exhaustively through a PowerPoint presentation that the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 does allow for local jurisdictions to consider land use in the siting of cell towers. But there are five restrictions that the federal government places upon you. The first is that the regulation of placement of cell towers cannot discriminate amongst providers. That being said, you can't give AT&amp;T special privileges over Verizon and vice versa. The second is the government—local government can deny an application or approve an application upon objective criteria. That objective criteria is found in the Land Development Code. You all have a copy of that. It's 2.4.49, and that should be your guiding force because that takes into account the federal regulations as well as our local regulations.
Matt, for the benefit of the audience, could you give us an idea what's in that 2.4?
And it goes through a laundry list of things. It goes through the purpose, and that contemplates the purpose of the Telecommunications Act of 1996, at one point allowing for local control over the placement and siting of cell towers, but also this concept that the federal government does not want to prohibit and, in fact, encourages wireless telecommunications. But the purpose in the act in section—or article 2 of the Land Development Code talks about protecting residential areas from adverse impacts of the towers, encouraging the location of wireless facilities in non-residential areas, minimizing the total number of wireless communication sites throughout the community, encouraging the users of towers and antennas to locate to the extent possible in areas where the adverse impact on the community is minimal, encouraging use of towers and antennas to configure them in a way that minimizes the adverse visual impacts of the towers and antennas through thoughtful design and citing landscape screening and innovative camouflaging and techniques, and enhancing the ability of the service providers of telecommunications services to provide such services to the community quickly, effectively, and efficiently. And to consider the public health and safety associated with wireless communications, with a really big caveat that I'll get into in a moment regarding the federal law, and this concept that the governing body cannot consider the environmental effects of the cell towers. I think what that means is, are there fall concerns in the design and engineering of the tower? And minimizing potential damage to adjacent properties from tower failure—now there you are—through proper engineering, careful siting of the towers. And then it continues on for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 more pages. And I don't know how much you really want me to get into that. All right. Now, regarding the five restrictions of the Telecommunications Act, the other one that we were just about to discuss is that the city must act within a reasonable period of time on an application. That doesn't mean you have to decide immediately. What that means is that the applicant will go through the normal processes like anything. If you have additional questions, we can come back for further study. You don't have to act within a time, which can't do is just let it linger there or ignore the problem. There has to be action. And for the benefit of the audience and for people out there in TV land, this Planning and Zoning Commission is not the final decision-maker on this. The city council will make the final decision. And I noticed through some of the correspondence—I wasn't sure if that was coming through necessarily. So know that this will get another hearing at the city council level, and they'll make the final decision. And, you know, one of the—one of the other requirements of the federal law is that if there is a denial in the application, that it has to be written down, and substantial evidence needs to exist to justify that denial. So I'm a little less concerned about you guys getting too into the weeds about the denial. It's very helpful for the council to know what your thought processes are. But when it gets to that level, and if it's approved, it's approved without any written recommendations necessarily under the federal law. If it's denied, that denial needs to be in writing and supported by the substantial evidence in the record. The substantial evidence in the record is going to look at whether this group—and then ultimately the city council—is comparing and contrasting and applying its Land Development Code, Section 2.4.9, in its decision-making. So that becomes very important. And the other restriction that we talked about a little bit is the city cannot deny a cell tower application on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. And I know often that's a very important issue for folks in the public who come up to talk to you about that. And, you know, if people come out of their homes and come to this meeting, they want to talk about that, that's fine. But this Planning and Zoning Commission can't consider the environmental effects in its decision-making, nor can the city council. So that just becomes a very important issue when taking testimony from the public. Now, those are sort of the five restrictions based on the federal law. So my advice to you in making your decisions is really take a hard look at your Land Development Code, apply the facts as they come to you to that code, and make your determinations based on that.
Thank you, Matt.
Matt, can I ask a question, please? Tom Hutchison. Back in summer of 2020, I recall a session specifically aimed at this topic that was provided by the previous city attorney. And I recall that the two reasons that the city could deny this application were the absence of demonstrating a coverage gap and that if the proposal was not the least—most least intrusive solution. Is that—is that accurate?
It's one of many factors. So if you take a look at the Land Development Code, you know, you'll see multiple factors based on safety issues, aesthetics, et cetera. But one of the most litigated things is whether or not the applicant can show that this is the sort of the least restrictive means of covering a significant gap in their coverage. So that's something you should query and get some information on.
Now, you said significant gap in their coverage versus any—all coverage, or how? So if Company A has coverage out there, but Company B doesn't, and Company B needs to be able to put a tower in to serve their customers, how does that play into it? This is not stump the stars, okay?
It's my understanding that we can't distinguish between companies.
It's—it's within its own company, so it's within AT&amp;T. So in regard to the application, the provider must be able to show that the proposed cell tower closes a significant gap in its own coverage. And they're doing it in the least intrusive way possible.
Thank you.
Can I have a moment to clarify or expand on the environmental impact as it shows what we're limited to and what we're not authorized to do? Because I know this is important, and it's been brought up before. But to expand on that, it says here, based on the Federal Telecommunication Act, that for the purpose of the requirement of the FCC regulations is to prevent telecommunications site decisions from being based on unscientific or irrational fears that emissions from telecommunications sites may cause undesirable health effects. And I know that—it was a huge issue from our audience, and I was surprised to see this once we got our packets. But I'm guessing that that's something that we're prohibited from being able to act upon according to the federal act.
Right. That—that's—a—it's a good statement of the—of the law.
Ted?
Tammy, could you go back a slide to the map where the water tank and the proposed cellphone tower would be?
It's another one that had 400 feet, 1,000 there.
Oh. The water tank is currently 1,400 feet from residents, and based on your other map, the cellphone—proposed cellphone tower would be 200 feet further north than the water tank.
400 feet north of the water tank.
How many?
400.
So it would be 1,800, if my math is right. For the audience, this is a—I think is a—since I've been on councils, this is our third cellphone tower. One was in Yavapai Hills, which was turned down. The other one was on Willow Creek. How tall was the cellphone tower on Willow Creek? It was next to the church.
100. Something 100. About 85 feet, but it was on a hill.
Okay. And when we first heard this proposal, it was 100 feet, it's been reduced to 80.
Correct.
Thank you.
And it still allows for two additional carriers to be able to co-locate onto it at that height.
Susan Graham, I have some questions, staff. The other two towers that are within a three-mile radius of the proposed tower, how tall are they? How long have they been there? And how many providers are on each tower?
I don't have that information available. I can show you there isn't on their RF map where their—where AT&amp;T has. So this shows the existing coverage. So the one kind of in the middle, that one is the proposed tower. And then those other towers are other AT&amp;T towers, I'm going to assume, since they're looking at the AT&amp;T coverage. So that kind of shows you about where they are, the other AT&amp;T towers. Some of these may not be in our jurisdiction, so we may not have that information. Some of them may be in the county or in Prescott Valley. So—but I don't have that information available off the top of my head.
Mr. Chairman, I think that might be a great question for the applicant.
Yeah, I think—yeah, my concern is if they're asking for 80 feet to have two other providers on there, if the other two towers only have one provider and no one else wants that number-two spot, then is it really feasible to have an 80-foot tower to allow two other providers if there's not multiple providers on the other two towers?
Well, so the—these are other towers that already have AT&amp;T. So this is just for AT&amp;T coverage. So other providers, if they need to, could go onto this tower, providing—about the building permits. They just have to apply for building permits.
Tammy, this feels like a build it and they will come thing.
But—well, our—our Land Development Code does encourage—you'd rather see one tower with multiple carriers on it than multiple towers, shorter towers. One tower is better than multiple towers.
But the fact is, they don't need 80 feet.
I'm going to defer that to the applicant to address in regards to their coverage because they have to be tall enough to read the other towers and to fill the gap. So there—it's up to them to show that—that that 80 feet is what they need to—to meet that requirement, to show the—the gap coverage. So there's a coverage map that they're infilling, so they have to show us—which they did with their propagation maps—how this is going to infill there.
The fact that they're preparing for two other carriers suggests that they don't need 80 feet.
Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Can you bring up Presentation 2, please?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Mark Sori. I'm with Smart Link. I represent AT&amp;T Wireless for this project. Bring it down. Okay, thanks. First of all, I'd like to address, if I could, the—the height of the tower with your question, Mr. Hutchinson. The reason we need 80 feet is it does need to be a co-locatable tower, and we prefer to have a co-locatable tower, as Tammy said, due to the fact that we don't want a bunch of more smaller towers. The carrier that would come onto the 80-foot tower would need that additional height below the 80 feet that AT&amp;T is going to go on to make—to meet their coverage objective. So it's—this is a little more rural on the top of the hill there by the water tank, so we would prefer everybody be there as opposed to around the water tank or below or closer to the neighbors to not have to build other towers and keep coming back here with you guys to approve these things. So let me see what we have here. So a few things from the last time, and I did receive the memo from the residents, very detailed, very good memo. I—I can only go so far as to address those situations. But what I will say in the basics here is that we did reduce the tower height to 80 feet. It was originally 100. We're going to make it a co-locatable monopole painted to whatever color that you guys feel is workable for the surrounding areas. And there was a fiber question the last time we were here, and it—it will be lit by fiber, so there'll be no microwave dish on the—on the tower. That was one of the residents' questions. In terms of the alternative site locations, there are no other facilities that we can locate on to meet the coverage objective for AT&amp;T. We chose this one specifically because of the height of the—of the hill, that it was not close to residents, that it was essentially away from as many properties as possible that weren't BLM or Arizona State Land. So that's—that's really the reason we did that. We did look at some alternative locations, but they just did not work for the coverage objective. AT&amp;T is—we're in a—we're in a coverage gap here. Our next closest site is, I think, approximately 2 to 2.5 miles away to the north and to the east, and we don't have anything to the west. So we will need that coverage gap. Somebody had asked about voice and data, the coverage maps. They do cover both voice and data. I won't get too into the weeds on the coverage maps, but essentially what we do and what our RF engineers do is they use the very best software in the world to make these propagation maps. So they are as close to as accurate as you can possibly get. So we did—there was also—we talked about the first net—first responder technology that's going to be going onto the tower. We did reach out to the City of Prescott Fire, police in Yavapai County, sheriffs. We did get one response back from Yavapai County. They have no issues. I did not hear back from Prescott Fire and Prescott Police on this particular. That was another question from the—from the residents. In terms of meeting the criteria for the special use permit, we would not be here if we didn't diligently go through everything within the City of Prescott's code to meet the objectives and meet the criteria for a special use permit. We are more than willing to do anything that's required by under the code and under the zoning ordinance to make sure it's correct. So I—I kind of wanted to make that as—as a priority here, that we're not here willy-nilly. We're—we're here to make sure we are doing everything under the code of the City of Prescott. So—and that's—that's basically it on my side from the—from this. I think we are more than willing to take any questions now from you guys that we can answer, that I can answer legally, and go from there.
Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Tom Hutchison here. I'm wondering if you have a viable business case without the other two co-located carriers?
Allowable? Well, the only thing I can—we want to make it co-locatable. That's all—that's really the—the basics. I—I don't know about a business case. We want to definitely make sure that we have one tower instead of several towers in the area that another carrier can locate on. That's really—I—I don't know about a business case, but that's—that's really our—from our perspective, that's what we want to do. We want to make sure there are not a bunch of towers around and there's only one, so—close to the BLM and the state land.
I had to step out of the room, but when I came back in, I think I heard you say you looked at two other locations?
We didn't speci—we—we did look at—we looked at a variety of properties that, and none of them would work. None of them worked from a RF perspective and from a land perspective of obtaining a lease. The Arizona State Land Department was willing to work with us in—on agreement, so we went forward with that because it was a—it was our best possible—best possible way to go, so.
I think I was a loyal AT&amp;T customer for over 20 years, but I have a friend lived up Williamson Valley off—I think the development's called Granite Oaks.
Yes, sir.
And one of the reasons I abandoned AT&amp;T and went to Verizon is because there was no AT&amp;T—AT&amp;T coverage up there.
Right. And that's—that's really why we're—why we're here and needing additional coverage is for these—these stories, so, yeah.
Other questions?
James Whiting, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Apparently, in the—from what I read, the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012 allows the fact that the 80-foot tower could be increased in size, in height. It says here the city would be legally prohibited from stopping them from doing so. Okay, is that—was that taken into consideration when you dropped the height from 100 feet to 80 feet?
No, actually, that wasn't. And you are correct. And actually, under the—under 6409, that is—that is allowable as a height increase. But we—we actually lowered the height based on concerns of the residents and that—and that we felt that anybody coming on the co-location based on the existing height of the hill would still have enough height to—to meet their coverage objective. So that's why we—that's why.
Okay, I have a further question, and this is probably directed towards the city attorney, too. In our Land Development Code, it says, "No existing facility—wireless telecommunications facility may be changed or modified except as follows." And one of— And one of the items as follows is the change does not increase the height to the tallest component above the height approved by, in the special use permit, or in case of an existing facility, it's then current height. Is that in conflict with the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act?
And, and the victor would be, in this case, the federal law would likely preempt over the local code as being inconsistent with the federal law.
So, it could be, the heights could be increased and we couldn't say anything about it?
Yes. Basically, on any cell tower in the city.
And let me just add, if I may, also in lowering the height, we were effectively trying to make sure we reduced the view shed of, of the tower from the surrounding property lines in the residence. That, that was the main thing for us in considering that, and we still meet the coverage objective.
On the other two towers that you have within a three-mile radius, are there any other providers on those towers?
I am not sure. I would assume so. I would have to research that information, ma'am, but I, I would assume since they're there, there are probably other carriers on them, because they've been there for a while, but I cannot say for sure who's on those towers. I can get you that information, though, if need, if need be.
And what height would you need if you only construct the tower, the proposed tower for yourself? I mean?
We would still need the 80 feet to meet our coverage objective. That, that would be it. That, that's what we need.
So, if you had somebody else on the tower in the number two position, would that do them any good?
Oh, sure. Yeah, they, they would, you know, they would have their height and they would be able to meet their coverage objective. I would say it would be about 65 feet for the next carrier, probably. And, and generally, I think Verizon needs a little bit of a lower height than AT&amp;T. So, just to use them as an example. So.
Quick question to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
The height is related to existing other towers to be able to transmit between the towers?
Yes, sir.
So, therefore, someone could be lower if they had another tower closer?
Yes, sir. I, I'm not an RF engineer. I, I can't speak completely on that, but yes, that's basically what we need to fill in the holes and to, to see the other tower, the existing towers that AT&amp;T has.
Okay.
Or the existing equipment.
Any other questions of the applicant? Anything else you would like to say, sir?
No, sir. I am, I'm good. I just wanted to provide the basics again. I did read the memo. I didn't want you to think that I didn't realize what the, the resident's concerns, and, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Now, I know I should probably not ask this question, but is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? Go figure.
Good morning. I'll call your name and could just come up to the podium, and you'll have three minutes. I'll give you a 30-second warning. Deborah Miller.
Can you bring up the number three presentation?
We do have presentations later.
Oh, sorry. We'll, we'll have it up.
I have the agreed-upon 10 minutes. And I'm Deborah Miller. I'm at 1062 Yavapai Hills Drive in Prescott, and I'm sharing a short summary of the 26-page memo of opposition that you've all gotten written copies of, as well as you were emailed. 54 people included in this submission. You have the printed, full printed memo with printed exhibits. This memo gives you all the information on how to effectively and legally deny this application, and the public deserves to know this information, too. It was not included online, so I'm giving a short summary, and I have tendence to do so. The application should be denied because Smart Link has failed to establish that granting the application would be consistent with the smart planning requirements under the Prescott Land Development Code, the LDC. Granting the application would violate both the LDC and its legislative intent. The irresponsible placement of this tower at the proposed location would inflict upon the nearby homes and community the precise type of adverse impacts which the LDC was enacted to prevent. The proposed location contains artifacts which may be eligible for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places, and the application could require a historic impact review by the FCC. There are far less intrusive, alternative locations where the desired facility could be built in greater conformity with the requirements of the LDC. The applicant has failed to establish that the proposed tower is actually necessary for the provision of personal wireless services, that it be built at the proposed site, or that the height proposed is a minimum height required and necessary to remedy whatever gaps in service which the applicant claims to exist. First point, granting Smart Link permission to construct an eight-story cell tower at the location it proposes would violate both the requirements under the LDC and its legislative intent. The code deals specifically with wireless communication facilities and supposed to be protecting residential areas and land uses from potential adverse impact of towers and antennas. And this all comes under height and what it looks like. Encouraging the location of wireless facilities in non-residential areas, that would be preferable. Minimizing the total number of wireless communication sites, encouraging the joint use of new and existing tower sites as a primary option, rather than the construction of single-use towers like, can't, you, you only saw AT&amp;T towers, what about all the other towers where they could co-look, on those, co-locate on those towers? Encouraging users of towers and antennas to locate them to the extent possible in areas where adverse impact upon the community is minimal. We're showing it's not minimal. Encouraging use of towers and antennas to configure them in a way that minimizes the adverse visual impact of the towers and antennas. Now, Smart Link's proposal does not align with any of these goals. And AT&amp;T's FirstNet program is available only to AT&amp;T customers and merely prioritizes calls by first responders. It does not guarantee them a good connection. Prescott's first responders have Verizon. They would have to switch to AT&amp;T to benefit from FirstNet. Smart Link is required to and has failed to provide evidence, and they are required to provide the evidence, to establish that this proposed tower is actually necessary to remedy any gap in personal wireless services, and the site and location is the least intrusive location, and that the height proposed is the minimum height necessary to remedy whatever gap in wireless service they are claiming exists. The irresponsible placement of a tower at the location proposed would inflict upon the community the precise types of adverse impacts that the LDC was specifically enacted to prevent. Now, the application does not comply with the requirements to grant a special use permit. Smart Link had to submit propagation maps to demonstrate that there is a significant gap in service which they would remedy. Their own project narrative, which you have, it states that the propagation maps are not accurate. Specifically, they say, and these are, these are some quotes, "These maps provide a predicted high-level approximation of wireless coverage. Actual coverage may differ from map graphics and may be affected by many factors. AT&amp;T does not guarantee coverage." They point out that no one should rely on the propagation maps they submitted, and this is most important. They say, "The coverage maps are not intended to show actual consumer, consumer performance on the network or future network needs. Coverage is subject to change without notice." What a disclaimer. Smart Link admits their maps are not intended to, to show the actual consumer performance, and they do not serve the purpose for which they were provided. By its own admission, the propagation maps in Smart Link's application are useless. Smart Link has failed to provide a shred of what they call probative evidence to show that the proposed location is the least intrusive site, is harmonious with the surrounding area's character, or that the glaring aesthetic intrusion has been minimized to the greatest extent possible. In its response to the commission's questions regarding the data used to create the propagation maps, and this is from the previous meeting, but incorporate what you heard today, Smart Link states that it cannot provide this information. The FCC identified AT&amp;T as the only wireless carrier that objected to the release of its coverage data due to an alleged concern that its competitors would see it and somehow put AT&amp;T at a disadvantage. AT&amp;T routinely refuses to release their data. The FCC determined that such predictive coverage maps are wholly unreliable without the hard data. You need the hard data. Now, the proposed cell tower would inflict dramatic and wholly unnecessary adverse impacts upon the aesthetics and character of the neighbor, of the area. Drive out, you will see what's already existing, and you will imagine a tower that is three to four times the height of the water tank that you see. The City of Prescott Land Development Code deals very specifically with it, with this. The focus is on protecting residential areas and land uses from potential adverse impacts of towers and antennas, and encouraging the uses, users of towers and antennas to locate them to the extent possible in areas where the adverse impact upon the community is minimal. Smart Link admits the proposed location is the only parcel considered. No other site could possibly be better. Without having considered other parcels, there's no way to determine that this is true. Smart Link just wants to take, just wants the commission to take its word for it. It is beyond argument that the irresponsible placement of Smart Link's massive eight-story tower in a rural residential neighborhood on a historical hill would cause the tower to stand out like a sore thumb, to dominate the skyline, and to inflict substantial adverse impacts, aesthetic impacts upon the nearby homes, built or about to be built. Even their photo simulation shows this. Federal courts have held that adverse aesthetic impacts are proper legal grounds upon which a local government may design, may deny a zoning application, and the persons who are best suited to accurately assess the actual adverse aesthetic impacts are the homeowners themselves. That's what they say. Now, you're going to see a presentation. There are many letters in Exhibit A, which you have printed copies of, from residents and property owners. There are detailed and compelling explanations of the dramatic adverse aesthetic impacts their properties would suffer. This is substantial evidence, and you require substantial evidence. Because of their detailed descriptions of how it dominate the views in their homes and their neighborhoods, the proposed tower will impact the view from popular hiking trails. The substantial adverse aesthetic impacts are the precise type of injurious impacts that the LDC was specifically intended to prevent. Smart Link's visual assessment is inherently defective and it should be disregarded entirely. In a hollow effort to induce the city to believe that the installation of an 80-foot tower going up to 100 feet without any more approval would not inflict a serious, severe adverse aesthetic impact upon the adjacent homes, Smart Link has failed to submit any meaningful visual resources, resource assessments. Not surprisingly, applicants like Smart Link often seek to misleadingly minimize the visual impact depictions by deliberately omitting any images where the impacts would be greatest. You saw three photos previously, and the courts have explicitly ruled that where in the
30 seconds.
Where an applicant omits such images, such presentations are inherently defective and should be disregarded. Smart Link does not include a single image taken from any homes that will sustain the most severe adverse aesthetic impacts. Their images do not accurately depict what Prescott homeowners will see each and every time they look out their bedrooms, their kitchens, living room windows, or sit in their backyards. This is the exact type of presentation
That's time.
Which the federal court explicitly ruled to be defective. In contrast, look at our accurate visual assessment with 50 photos in Exhibit B that you have of views from properties and public roadways in Prescott. The resident's photos show the truth.
Thank you, ma'am. In our last meeting, we had a discussion about, we have decorum in our meetings. You may agree with the speaker, you may disagree with the speaker, but there'll be no hand-waving, no applause, no outbursts of comments. Am I clear? Next.
Melissa Radwick. Please put the presentation back up so they can go through it.
I thoroughly appreciate your listening. I'm Melissa Radwick at 1830 Royal Oak Circle. The proposed installation will inflict substantial and wholly unnecessary losses in the values nearby residents' properties. Across the United States, both real estate appraisers and real estate brokers have rendered professional opinions that simply support what common sense dictates. When large cell towers are installed within view of residential homes, such homes lose value typically ranging from 5% to 20%. In the worst cases, cell towers built near existing homes have caused the homes to be rendered wholly unsellable. Federal courts say it's perfectly proper for local zoning authority to consider the professional opinions of licensed real estate brokers as direct evidence of the reduction in property values. So, you will see Exhibit C with letters from local licensed real estate professionals that say exactly that. So, point two, there is a law allowing Smart Link to increase the height of the proposed tower up to 20 feet more without further or prior zoning approval. Their tower could go up to 100 feet. Point three, Smart Link has failed to prove to establish a need for the proposed tower at the location and height proposed, or that granting of this application would be consistent with the smart planning requirements of the zoning ordinance. This requires that the cell towers be strategically placed so that they minimize the number of towers needed while saturating the city with complete wireless coverage, no gaps in wireless service, while avoiding any unnecessary adverse aesthetic or other impacts upon homes and communities that are close by. Entirely consistent with that intent, the City of Prescott adopted a general plan in 2015. The general plan expresses the Prescott vision, which is about the future, a future well-founded on Prescott's pioneering days, the historic agri, arctic, sorry, architecture and small-town quality.
30 seconds.
Among the fundamental values for the Prescott vision is preservation of community character, including environmental, economic, cultural, and historic community assets. Site developers are required to provide direct proof of the specifics of any geographic gaps or deficiencies in personal wireless service because the planning boards cannot know to what extent that proposed
That's time.
Tower will remedy any of these actual gaps or deficiencies. And if the proposed height is the minimum height needed, and if the proposed placement is in such a poor location, that it would be, it require that more towers be built. In the present case, Smart Link has wholly failed to provide any hard data or any useful data at all. Smart Link has failed to prove the need for the proposed tower at the height and location proposed. The applicant must prove it is public necessity that is required to render safe and adequate service, and that there are compelling reasons why their proposed installation is more feasible than any other location. Smart Link admits in its response to the city's questions that no other sites were investigated, asserting that no other site could possibly be better. Of course, there is no way to know that what, without some investigation into alternative sites. Please note, in another case, it has been shown where a local zoning board denies a cell phone, a cell tower application, even one reason given for the denial is based upon substantial evidence.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Okay, thank you. And I am Melissa Radwick. I want you to know, I was a science teacher, a health teacher, and a grade school counselor, so adverse effects are important to me, too. I know you can't consider that, but I want you to know.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. If we can work to try to keep the presentations to three minutes, we would appreciate that.
It's almost done. My name is Patrick Pearson, 8780 Oak Forest Drive, Granite Oaks. And to continue on, please note, in another case, it was shown zoning board denies cell tower application tower application, even one reason given for the denial is based on substantial evidence. The decision of the local zoning body cannot be distributed, disturbed by federal court.
Sir, excuse me, could you speak more into the mic?
Sure.
It's difficult to hear you there.
Okay. It is beyond argument that Smart Link has failed to meet the burdens of proving and not provided the hard data. It has not been shown that its proposed tower is a public necessity, that its tower would be present, a minimal intrusion on the community, that its proposed placement would minimize its aesthetic intrusion, or that denial of its application would constitute a prohibition of personal wireless services. It has not shown that the installation of a new tower is actually needed, built at that chosen location on that chosen site versus alternative, less intrusive locations, and built at an elevation no lower than the height now proposed. Smart Link has reduced its requested height from 100 feet to 80 feet. Indeed, Smart Link realized-
Excuse me, sir, could you get back close to the microphone? We're losing you again.
Sure. Realized they can build their tower at 80 feet and still have room for two co-locators. However, given that Smart Link would be allowed to add another 20 feet to its 80-foot tower, the commission should clarify exactly how adding two additional carriers would, would be accomplished. If it would be achieved, that by adding height to the tower after approval, as many site developers and wireless carriers do, then the proposed reduction in height is-
Thirty seconds.
On the other hand, the proposed tower can accommodate two additional carriers without going to 100 feet. Then the previous request for a 100-foot tower was based on questionable data. In either case, the commission should insist on hard data, regardless of the excuses for not providing it.
That's time.
Good morning. My name is John Moore. I live at 1397 Pinion Shadow in Prescott in Southview. Continuing on, if on the other hand, the proposed tower can accommodate two additional carriers without going to 100 feet, then the previous request for a 100-foot tower was based on questionable data. In either case, the commission should insist on hard data regardless of the excuses for not providing it. Because Smart Link has either made false claims in its first presentation or is withholding facts in the current presentation, the commission should not just take their word for it. The FCC has recognized the absolute need for hard data rather than the commonly submitted propaganda map, propagation maps, such as those submitted by Smart Link here. They can easily be manipulated to create over-exaggerated in need and significant gaps. In 2020, the FCC issued a final rule in which the FCC found that the requiring providers to submit detailed data about their propagation models will help the FCC verify the accuracy of the models. Mandate requiring more accurate coverage maps has been set forth by Congress with a new version of a bill. Despite Congress's clear intent to improve the quality of the data, several wireless carriers, including AT&amp;T, have opposed this as too costly. If the FCC requires further validation and more accurate coverage models, there is no reason the City of Prescott should not do the same. Smart Link has provided only its vague coverage maps depicting the alleged existing and potential coverage. There is no hard data whatsoever. There were no actual drive tests and no drop call records evidence given. Their propagation maps do not have any value. Without providing a shred of hard data to support the same, and after potentially manipulating the actual data, Smart Link arrived at what was undoubtedly their predetermined conclusion that Smart Link needs to have this 80-foot tower. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 requires that any decision denying an application to install a wireless facility be made in writing and be made based on substantial evidence. Reading the definition of substantial evidence, note that the courts may not supplant a local zoning board's reasonable determinations. To ensure the commission's decision would stand up to a challenge under the Telecommunications Act of 1996, is respectfully requested that the commission deny Smart Link's application in a separate written decision where the commission cites the evidence. All too often, representatives of wireless carriers and/or site developers seek to intimidate local zoning officials with either open or veiled league threats of litigation. These threats of litigation are, the TCA are, for the most part, entirely hollow. Look at the details provided in this memo. We respect, respectfully submit that Starlink's application for a special use permit be denied in a manner that does not violate the Telecommunications Act of 1996. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Ken Gullner, 110 North Summit Ave, Prescott, Arizona. If you can go to the presentation, I believe it's, it's Exhibit B, which is approximately page 16. Okay. And one quick comment I want to make. It's been stated by the applicant both today and in the previous meeting that the proposed tower is about 400 feet away, and I think last time they mentioned approximately 100 feet lower in elevation. This is not only inaccurate, it's shown to be so on their own application map. The topographical map, which is in their own survey, shows that the tower is 60, um, zone of the compound is 60 feet from the fence of the water tank, and it's approximately six feet lower. So I'm showing some photos of areas around the neighborhood. Whoops, going the wrong way here. Okay. So this is a shot from Longview up Bowie Drive. Okay? And you can clearly see, if you put the tower kind of just in the front of that where the proposed site is, and imagine about 80 feet to 100 feet, which would be about two to three times the height of the water tank.
So we're looking at a water tank and a tower, but not the tower proposed.
Right. So you'd have to, basically, if you calculate based on this topographical map, the location of the tower, which would be a little bit down the slope, and you can see the, the current road is off to the left, so the, the height of the tower at 80 feet would be approximately two times the height of the top of the water tank as it stands there, and up to three times if it went to 100 feet, which they could do. So I'll continue. Here's another view. Longview up Bowie Drive, Longview Trail, uh, Longview Trail entrance, trail, Longview Trail, second shot. Longview Home on Fawn Lane, Longview Home on Fawn Lane, second shot. Another shot on Fawn Lane. Longview, corner of Fremont and Bowie. It's clearly visible. Longview from one of the residence homes in their kitchen, 4685 Cody Drive. Okay, I'm gonna go to the next set of photos here. Top of Longview Drive, top of Longview Drive again. When it says opposite view, just so you know, I basically, after taking the photo at the site, I would just turn around to show what was behind me. So there's several of those, just showing the neighborhood. Sorry, I'm going kind of fast. Okay, this is 3068 La Cuesta in Southview, and you can see the tower that's currently there, just over the hill, Pedregal Drive in Southview. Okay. But you have all these photos, so you can basically go through them. This is the opposite view, and there's several others. They're all basically similar. Along Williamson Valley Road, the opposite view, and there's the tower again from Buena Vista, and the opposite view showing the community. Right? So you said that was time, right? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Because I was asked a question, could I have another 30 seconds?
What would you, for?
Because my, part of my time was taken from the question that, that I was asked.
30 seconds.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay, I just, I'll just skim through some more of the photos. 5978 Symphony Drive, north of Pioneer Parkway. Here's the opposite view, so just turning around to show what's visible from there and the, the homes that would see that, that view. Okay. And then Suncrest and Commerce, three miles off Pioneer Parkway. Okay, and there's the opposite view, the future development area. And then this is on Pioneer Parkway, heading west toward the intersection of Williamson Valley Road, looking toward the hill, and you can see it on the left there, as driving down the road. And those are the last few photos. I'll just kind of skim through them. And thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, sir. Next, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Tom Daniels. I live at 29-
Excuse me, just one second. Did you take the clicker with you? Yes, you did. Okay.
Good eye.
No souvenirs.
I live at 2988-
That'll be the third one this week.
La Cuesta in the community of Southview. And I'm a data point. I moved here to Prescott eight years ago from Bend, Oregon, absolutely beautiful place also. And I had a tower built right next to our home on Aubrey Boot, if any of you are familiar with that community. It's a large hill in the middle of a community overlooking the Cascade Mountains. I sold my home at a loss of $150,000 because a 100-foot tower was built right behind us. From my home, I never saw that tower, but a lot of the people in our community of Aubrey Boot did. The average loss was probably not 150. I sold my home for $450,000, and the appraisers had told me before the tower was built it was already worth $600,000. I know for a fact that I lost $150,000 because a tower, 100-foot tower, was built right near our homes in, in our community, and our neighbors left the community because of that. So I'm a data point that knows that it cost me out of my pocket. That's vertical real estate. A tower is vertical real estate. AT&amp;T, that, those extra cohabitants will make them a lot of money. But I don't want, I don't care if they make money, but I don't want it to come out of my pocket. Secondly, Southview Trails, our community, is in the same boat. Not all of us are going to see that tower. "Oh, it doesn't bother me, I won't see it." Well, that's gonna still impact your home value, I know from my personal experience. Also, I enjoy Pioneer Park and going over and playing pickleball. I ride my mountain bike on the Brownlow Trails, and every, I'm out there four or five times a week. And every day, I see where that tower is, all those pictures, outstanding job taking those photos. And that tower, from tons of money that City of Prescott has put into Pioneer Park and, and the playground that's across the street from there, it's gonna be such an eyesore in a primo City of Prescott facility, that it's just absolutely disgusting to think that there would be a tower put there. It's so ugly. I know it's ugly, but I've had one in my backyard. Lastly, the points, these points have been taken, but in this presentation and in the writings I saw, I saw zero, zero proof that there was any significant improvement based on those 80. I'm sure there would be, because I'm an engineer, too. I know one of my jobs was actually running an instrumentation range for the Navy, so I know exactly how RF works. The overlay of the 35-foot tower doesn't show-
That's time.
-impact. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, have you, excuse me, I have a few questions. Four, to be exact.
Okay.
You said you sold your house for how much money?
$450,000. Disgusted all of my neighbors.
And the appraised value was? What did you purchase it for?
I built it in, I sold it in 2015 for 450. I had it built, custom home, and after all the improvements, I think our basis was about $320,000. I made money.
And how long did you own it?
15 years.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Sarah?
Linda and Larry Gray.
Good morning, commissioners and guests. My name is Linda Gray, and my husband is Larry, and we reside in Southview. We had a dream to get out of the heat in Phoenix. In 96, we purchased a lot in Southview. We looked at model homes for over seven years to find a design that would encapsulate the beautiful views that we would have of Indian Mountain, Mankas Mountain, and also Glassford Hills. The scenic view can be seen from our living room, kitchen, dining room, bedroom, and large deck. So whether I'm cooking or washing dishes at the kitchen sink, we enjoy a beautiful, peaceful setting. I served 16 years in the legislature, and my income was never more than $24,000 a year. Larry served 37 years on Phoenix PD. We saved for years to build our dream home. We enjoy having guests. Their first comment is about the beautiful view, and also relaxing on our deck in the peaceful environment. And so now, we have a big corporation who wants to come and increase their corporate greed and devalue our investment. The airport requested the flashing red light for aircraft safety issues, and yet Smart Link says they are dedicated to safety issues, so why object to the safety light? Also, Smart Link did not mention the Public Safety Department that has jurisdiction for where the tower will be located, which is Kaufman, Nevada, by Sheriff, not getting a response from Prescott PD and Police Department. So, we have this, if we have this flashing red light, you might also put up a flashing blue light, because it would appropriately remind us of the Kmart blue light specials for lower prices. And that is exactly what will happen to our property values. Before moving here full-time, we look forward to turning west from Fein Road and seeing the impressive mountain peaks, Little Granite, Indian Mountain, and Big Granite. So please, and this is where it goes to that adverse visual issue, because as soon as you turn and drive toward those mountains, you're gonna see the tower. It's an adverse visual issue. City of Prescott zoning regulations said no home could be built more than 35, 36 feet above the natural slope. So why should a corporation be allowed to build any higher? Also, then how do you resolve the height discrimination between the current tower that is there? So Larry and I respectfully request that the tower not be placed there. Thank you for listening to us all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Let's see. Does it just pop in here? Can you hear me now? Good morning. I'm Heidi Remichael, and I, my workplace is 113 Wesker Goodwin Street in Prescott. And regarding this special use permit application, I'm a licensed Arizona real estate agent since 2013. I'm with Realty Executives, Arizona- I'm with Realty Executives, Arizona Territory, in Prescott. I work with both buyers and sellers of residential homes. And I'm familiar with the general market conditions and issues that are of concern to many home buyers and homeowners. So regarding buyer clients, in my experience, I have concerns about transmission equipment facilities or cell towers near their prospective homes, that will consequently, no matter how well-priced or well-suited that home is for them, these homes are very aesthetically unappealing. Regarding my seller clients, it's been my experience that homes near cellular transmission tower may sell at a value 10% to 20% less compared to a home not located near that type of equipment. Those homes tend to stay on the market a little longer, and the seller disclosure statement would need to include the mentioning tower in the adjacent parcel, as well as HUD classifies cell towers as a nuisance or hazard. They do risk appraisal reports that have a negative impact on the value of their home, and it would be detrimental for all current and future homeowners. So based on my professional experience, it is my opinion that the placement of the 80-foot cell tower at 3599 Williamson Valley would substantially decrease the value of homes and the adjacent Southview subdivision, Longview, which is north of that, and future Stringfield Ranch, which is west across Williamson Valley Road, and other close-by neighborhoods. So please do not approve the Smartlink application. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, sir.
Ann Moore.
My name is Ann Moore. I live at 1397 Pinion Shadow Drive in Southview. I have found it very interesting that the applicant's presentation today differs so significantly from the one they gave a month ago. Last month, they said their primary reason for this tower was for first responder communication. That has been a very small subheading in today's presentation. Today, they finally got to the root of why they want this tower, to make money. They want people in Stringfield Ranch to sign up. They want people in Deepwell Ranch to sign up. They want to make more money. They come in on a second presentation showing they're giving concessions. Oh, not a 100-foot tower, now it's an 80-foot tower. It's all been part of the plan. That's how big business works. I know. I worked for Boeing for 31 years. They go through what-if scenarios. What if everybody objects to a 100-foot tower? Well, we can really live with an 80-foot tower. They're talking about money, plain and simple. I hike the area to the east of the existing water tower and cell tower almost every day. I didn't this morning, so I could be here on time. I see the water tower. I see the existing cell tower. I also see the deer and the coyotes, and I count the bunnies every morning that I see on my walk to get over to Pioneer Park. That cell tower is going to be a huge blight in the neighborhood, just from the aesthetics purposes. You will see that cell tower for miles around. You will see it from Stringfield Ranch, and those people who have purchased lots over there don't even know this monstrosity is going up. They don't know that their property values will instantly decline when construction starts on that cell tower. I have, my husband and I have been here almost seven years. We love our home. Within just a few months, with where our home is, the neighbors we have, the neighborhood we're in, the city of Prescott, I was telling people, this is where I am going to die.
30 seconds.
I hope I can die in my home. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, sir.
Andrew Kulp.
All right, thanks. Thanks again for listening. I know that this is quite the beehive in your lap. I'm Andrew Kulp. I live at 1966 Lower Crestview in Prescott. I was going to zoom out a little bit, just, just in what I'm talking about today, and just talk about how Prescott is known for its historic character and the rugged natural beauty that's here. And cell phone towers in the midst of our city and in our neighborhoods, they're just unpleasant to look at. They really detract from Prescott's charm and from our tourist industry. Property devaluation is obviously another problem with cell towers. And really, most people's largest investment is their primary residence, and having a cell tower go up nearby reduces the value of that home, and that really harms the financial future of the property owner, because nobody wants to buy a home underneath a cell tower. And so homes located near them become less valuable, as you've, as you've seen. Cell towers really should be as short as possible, just to lower their, you know, their profile. And they, honestly, they belong on mountaintops, far away from where people live. Our city, I hope that we would hire legal counsel to write protective city ordinances that we can adopt to protect our city's aesthetics and our property values, so that we don't have to come out like this every time there's a new application submitted. The city of Fountain Hills, just east of Scottsdale, has recently done just this, and we should also. Cell towers, just, they belong on the tops of mountains, far away from our city's charm and far away from our valuable homes. And let us use every legal means to responsibly and effectively manage the cell tower infrastructure in Prescott. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, sir.
William Kuznick.
Thank you for your time. My wife and I live, have lived in Southview subdivision for over eight years. We are opposed to proposed.
Sir?
Yes.
Excuse me for interrupting, name and address.
William Kuznick. Live at 1475 Creek Trail, sorry. Were proposed the antenna being considered by the commission? The location is adjacent to a major intersection in Pioneer Parkway and Williamson Valley Road. The project, besides being a daily eyesore for residents of Southview, is in the middle of four to five subdivisions, including hundreds of homes already built or being built, and could affect the aesthetics of these neighborhoods and future development. It will be visible and a significant distraction to anyone traveling these major roadways daily while going to and from work, or less frequently, being, being just a blight in the area. It will also be visible from an adjacent to Pioneer Park, where the city has made significant investment to develop a recreational area for the whole community. Crowding this project into a key intersection in the northwest part of Prescott is, in our opinion, poor judgment aesthetically for safety reasons and financial reasons. We have been cautioned by local real estate professionals that such a project could significantly affect the future marketability of homes in the area and decrease the investment we and other has, others have already made. And it could also affect the tax base. Our understanding is the property is zoned residential and should remain so for the good of the community. The speed of this decision and lack of proper consideration for the above issues should be a concern for the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Richard Loakes.
My name is Richard Loakes. Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. I am the Vice President of the Board of Directors of Southview.
Excuse me, sir. We need your address, too.
1494 Southview Drive.
Thank you.
Before I can start, I, can I get a clarification? If it is true that there is a 20% overage height allowance that would not require additional approval, meaning this 80-foot tower could become 96 feet? Can I get an answer on that?
Yes.
Is that true? Okay, thank you. I live in Southview, and I'm 100% opposed to this tower. The Prescott Land Development Code, or LDLC, was created to address this exact situation, to prevent unnecessary and substantial adverse aesthetic impact upon residential properties and their neighborhoods. This eight-story monopole tower over our neighborhood and community, with its blinking lights destroying the view and feel of our neighborhood. Indian Hill will go from a peaceful hill where wildlife roam to a sacred hill with 20-foot-wide road slicing in half, an eight-story tower that will dominate the skyline for miles. I hope you have the time to drive by Indian Hill, so you can see for yourself how an eight-foot tower is not suitable for this hill and area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Dale Storrs.
My name is Dale Storrs, 1494 Southview Drive. I do want to bring up one quick thing that Ken went over earlier for clarification, that the RF engineering drawing, where the comment was that the tower would be 400, tower would be 400 feet below the water tank, is actually going to be 100 feet. And if we can get confirmation after, from the engineers on that RF drawing, the increments that I believe Tammy calculated were at 20 feet, and they should have been, and that's the increments of the contour lines, and they should have been calculated at one feet, one foot. So again, I believe this is correct, that the tower is merely 100 feet below the water tank, not 400 feet. So aside from that, as I expressed last time when I was here, you guys are in a really difficult position. You're very limited on why you can deny this, but you have overwhelming evidence today on truly why this can be denied. Safety is still a concern. The tower, which could be approved at 80 feet, could be 96 feet. If it's 96 feet, does a blinking light go back on it? I think it probably does. And that brings back the question of, well, wait a minute. If it's outside the airport concerns, why would you need a blinking light on a 96-foot tower? Because probably it's a concern. You've got 877 takeoffs and landings a day, predominantly by students, and in my opinion, that's a safety concern. I did send you some pictures of, I think it was just one or two days, of a couple of airplanes literally flying right over. All day long, we have students flying over. I don't mind it. I think it's great. But it's a concern if you're going to have a 96-foot tower there, 80 feet, 96 feet, and you have students flying over all, every day. Safety aside, it comes back to aesthetics. So per the land development code, it's exactly why this code was developed. It is not harmonious. An 80, 100-foot tower is not harmonious to the surrounding area. As Rick brought up, I hope you've had time to drive up, if you don't live near Pioneer Parkway and Williamson's Valley Ranch, or Williamson's Valley Road. It's a very peaceful, tranquil setting. An 80-foot tower will no longer make it a peaceful tranquil, tranquil setting.
30 seconds.
It comes back to, it's a 35-foot height limit. 35 feet. Somebody came up with that, an engineer, somebody who was an expert in their field said, this hill can accept 35 feet. How do we get approval for an 80-foot tower? It's way too far. 30, 80-foot tower, 30 by 30-foot compound, it's too much. As the years go on, they're going to add on to the tower. It'll be seen for miles and miles. You're going to see it at the hilltop by the mall. You're going to see it at Pioneer Park. You're going to see it out towards Williamson's Valley.
That's time.
On your way to Pioneer Parkway. I'm almost done, thank you. Look around our area. There are mountaintops that would be a better location, that would not tower over a neighborhood. Please consider somewhere in Williamson's Valley where they need the service. Better yet, have them find out if there's a local tower that they can add on to. What a concept. I urge you to consider the aesthetics of our community and deny the permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Phil Davis.
Okay, good morning. My name is Phil Davis, 2647 Country Park Drive. So I'd like to say good morning also to the Commissioners and Mayor Good, City Council, and also Senator Gray. I'd like to highlight aviation hazards, tower alternatives, First Net, and then also the Indian Fort and the adverse impacts. So in the first handout, I've got pictures of airplanes flying around the proposed site. They're flying, they use the water tank as a navigation aid. I've got five pictures. Amber Riddle, folks, I hiked up to the water tank after our last meeting, and I was, as I'm at the water tank, I'm being flown around. So that blue dot is me at the water tank with aircraft buzzing around me. Also, behind that, I've got a large picture of the City of Prescott Flight Track Density Plot.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Are you referring to this packet here?
That's correct.
Okay, and you said you, there are pictures of planes. You've colored them in orange here, right?
No, you'll see photos right there in your hand. You'll see five photos stacked up there, and those are snapshots from Flight Tracker. And it shows the, the flight wing number, the tail number, etc.
Thank you. I caught up.
Okay, good. Yes, sir. So the blue dot is, is where I'm standing. So the large print right there, the color, that's from City of Prescott Flight Track Density Plot, shows the traffic density going in and out of the airport. The red X on the lower-left corner, that's the proposed location. So we're going to turn a navigation aid into a navigation hazard, but what can I say? I was reading my favorite magazine, Aviation Weekly, about auto land, which our commercial aircraft have. So auto land can bring an aircraft into land during bad weather, 200 feet, 100 feet, below 100 feet. So we're proposing a tower on a 5,500-foot mountain, sorry. We've got snow. We're at high altitude. We've had aircraft land on Iron Springs Road. We've had aircraft land on Highway 89. What if that altimeter isn't working so well? I would call that an adverse impact. Next, I'd like to talk about Smartlink. Smartlink, I like to give them Pants on Fire Award. Why do they not get calls back from fire, from city, from YCSO? I think they've been untruthful to you about Smartlink. I spoke to Samantha Russell. She's the YCSO Executive Director for Communication. So they have chosen to opt out of this Smartlink First Net system. So they don't have it. I wonder why they didn't call you back.
30 seconds.
Yep, thank you. So anyway, that is, that's a big issue. So I've got a couple of pictures. I have the water tower up on Willow Creek Road, and it shows five towers. The last two are cell towers. I've also got a Table Mountain alternative site for you. And Mr. Gamboggi, Commissioner Gamboggi, we have the, if there's an 80-foot cell tower from AT&amp;T, this will show all the way out to, oh, there's Granite Oaks right there. So good coverage. So good coverage for Granite Oaks, if that's an alternative location.
That's time.
That's probably why I fell behind, because I was looking at this pad.
Oh, you're looking at the iPad, you can't keep that. So yes.
All right, I fess up. But what am I looking at on the iPad?
Okay, so you're looking at an AT&amp;T tower, if they put that on the existing Tower Mountain site. Okay? It shows red in coverage, cell coverage.
Oh, so that's your suggested alternative?
Suggested alternative, there's existing tower there. That's on Hunt Ranch property. They also own the property there at Outer Loop Road, which would be another alternative, alternative location. It's called point of sight. So point of need, that's where you put the cell tower. So that's a county-owned Verizon iPad. We use that for navigation. That's not Google Earth or Google Maps. That's search and rescue that we use. So it's a life-saving app we use. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Yep, I request 35-foot tower limit. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Amy J. Wing.
Good morning. My address, 240 South McCormick Street, Apartment 16 in Prescott. And...
You can pull the mic down if you want, to reverse his tiptoes.
I, like my, the speakers before me, I am deeply concerned about this, and I love the natural setting here, like we all do, and this looks like it would really diminish than the, what we love here, outdoor recreation, being so important to residents and visitors here. I haven't really heard why, why our community would need this. The justification is really weak, it's lacking. Why are we even, why would we do this? I unders, oh, the safety of the students flying in the area does concern me, too. I want to ask you, because of the, the real estate issue of devaluing properties that has been consistently spoken about, there are some slides that are part of Exit C. Would you be able to pull them up? Because they have actually letters from real estate agents who... Oh, I can do it, okay. Okay, here's one letter. This is from Heidi Remachel. And then there's another letter here from Robin McCanis. And a third letter from Andrea McInter. And all of these letters, they are saying the same thing, and I think there might even be more letters, but they're all saying that homes are devalued, as we've heard from some of the speakers already, about their personal homes and their knowledge about how they would be affected. More letters. I guess there's quite a number of letters. So I was hoping that you would consider that, and also just the fact that we are deeply concerned about this. We don't need it, we don't want it.
Thirty seconds.
That's how I feel. That's why I'm here today.
Thank you.
Margaret Mendoza. Thilo Cass.
Good morning. My name is Thilo Cass, 1844 West Farview Lane. I strongly oppose against this project, and I would like to vote, give my speaker time to Ms. Miller, please, and if that's possible. And that's all I want to say, and thank you very much, and keep Prescott beautiful. Thank you.
Ma'am, we're getting into an area that we don't usually do. We allow 10 minutes there to keep on trying to give...
I have just a few additional things to share.
I'll give you three minutes, that's it.
Thank you very much.
One time only.
Thank you very much. In the two documents, the revised project narrative and the drawings which I received last Friday evening, in response to my FOIA request for all the documents, I noticed several oddities. And forgive me, but in my opinion, this is a rather sloppy application. There's no date on the document, the project narrative. There used to be a date on the previous one. In site details, they're still asking for a pine tree. In the added section, AT&amp;T, T, RF mapping, there's a typo. They spell AT&amp;T with an extra T. And then there's really an extensive disclaimer, and you guys really should read it all. I covered some of it before. There's also no legend on the map showing the distance between contour lines. So it was understandable that there's a mistake made. In the previous hearing and in this hearing, information has verbally been misrepresented. The contour lines are one feet, they're not 20 feet. When you're hiking, it makes a big difference if you're looking at a map with one feet, 10 feet, 20 feet contour lines. So they said last meeting, the answer to Commissioner Cambogi is that there were 20-foot contour lines. That's incorrect, it's one-foot contour lines. They said that it would be, and it was said today, 400 feet from the fence line to the new tower. That's incorrect, it's 100 feet. You've got to look at the engineering drawings, because verbally you're being told inaccurate information. Also, you've been told that the elevation drop is going to be 100 feet. That's incorrect. According to the engineering drawings, it's only going to be about 6.5 to, a little bit more than that, depending on exactly where you put the pen. So this is important, that verbally you are being told what you are seeing in engineering drawings, which they're kind of hard to understand, anyway. And in the drawing of the proposed tower, it says pending final design by others. Why is it pending? You're, you're going to be looking at aesthetics. You should have all this information prior to. And the applicant does say that this tower is intended for three carriers, but their engineering drawing only shows antennas for one carrier, for AT&amp;T. This is a big difference aesthetically between having antennas for one carrier and three carriers. And, and let's see. And I'd like to reiterate, the proof has not been given. I don't have any documentation that I can review as a citizen for the original proof for why 100-foot tower was needed. Now they're asking for an 80-foot tower, which can go up to 100 feet, which you still need that blinking red light.
Thirty seconds.
And then have they studied what coverage a 35-foot tower would, would provide? What proof did they give you? Did they consider 50, 60, 70 feet? Where is the added benefit to an 80-foot tower? I expect a lot of documentation to review with accurate cell coverage mappings provided, according to what the FCC requires, without all the disclaimers, and none of that has been provided. So I respectfully request that this application
That's time.
be denied, based on everything that you have in your code to do so. Thank you very much.
Denise Allen.
Good morning. My name's Denise Allen. I live at 601 Thunderbird Drive, and I appreciate you listening to all of us today. The reason, I don't live in the area, I don't live near the cell tower, but my husband and I go walking on the trail regularly, and we enjoy seeing the beautiful scenery. It's, it's a really nice trail to walk on. We both fell in love with the City of Prescott and Yavapai County because of the natural surroundings and feelings of serenity and peace we feel daily. We love that it's very historical. This is why it disturbs me, to even imagine an 80-foot or 96-foot or whatever cell tower looming over our regular walks in this pristine area. It's, it's bad enough I see the 35-foot one, but then to have another one that's looming over that one will make it just hideous. When I look at the, the view of the water tower, I see the landscape, as I said, already marred by the other cell tower. How many cell towers do we need? When we're, when I drive down Copper Basin, which is near my house, and I look out, I see this beautiful view of the city, and I see two hills, one with a water tower close to us, filled with cell towers. You know, that's where my eyes go. I'm like, I don't want to look at that. I want to look at the, you know, the, the nice environment. I do not feel this, that this is environmentally in our best interest. And I would urge you to please reject the placement of this cell tower. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all the cards I have.
Okay.
Can I have an additional minute?
Would the applicant like to make any comments? And there may be more questions for you from the Commissioners.
Sure. Again, Mark Sawyer with Smart Link. I just want to address a couple of things, and then I'll take questions. Regarding the light on the tower, we never, if there's a light that's required on the tower, we can, we can put a light on the tower. If not, we won't. That's not, that's not an issue whatsoever. I really want to kind of address, there's an existing tower up there. I believe it's 60 feet, it's a lattice tower. We just kind of want to say that there's already existing verticality up there. Try to hope to blend in with that. One thing I neglected to talk about earlier was that we will meet all the compliance, environmental, Native American shippo, archaeological studies. We do all of that. So that, that, that is not an issue. That is mandatory under, under the guidelines of the FCC and, and of course, the City of Prescott. So more than willing to take questions.
Questions?
I have a comment. I was under the impression that that existing tower was 35 feet.
I could be off on that.
We looked for our records through the building permit. It is a city tower. It did get a permit, but nowhere on the permit to say what the height was. So we, we don't have any information about the height of that.
I'll call that a guesstimate, then, apologies.
So what was the answer to your question? I didn't hear that.
We, we don't have one, Ted. They don't know how tall the existing one is. I, I really think that should be determined.
I had a few questions as well. I know in the last meeting that we had on this, this committee requested certain information. It appeared from this mission that no real answers were given for any of the questions previously asked.
Okay, do you have some specifics? Would you like to ask those questions now?
Well, I had one, I brought it up last meeting. I did ask about having you come back and talk about, and show us what the alternative sites were, and that's still being ignored.
Okay, I don't have specific information on the alternative sites. I will provide that to you. We do not have a lot of alternative site options here, based on our coverage objective and need and the height of the hill. So, but I can provide some additional information on that. I just don't have a lot to provide to you at this time, so.
One of the other questions was some type of data or proof in terms of the need for the increased coverage?
I can't really speak on that. I do have my RF engineer here. He can speak on that if you would like to hear from him. He is here. He can give you kind of a brief overview on why we need this additional coverage. Would you like to hear from him?
Yes.
Yes.
Good morning, guys. So I'm the AT&amp;T RF engineer. I'm in charge of all the new site builds for the whole...
Could you get a little closer to the mic, please?
Is this okay, sir? So I'm the AT&amp;T RF engineer. I'm in charge of all the NSB portfolio for AT&amp;T, for Axon or New Mexico market. So the question was, what exactly do you need, ma'am?
Some type of data or proof that there is a lack of coverage that will be resolved by putting up an 80-foot tower in this location.
So typically, for every jurisdiction that requires us to show that there's a need for a coverage gap, we show them the propagation maps. That itself shows, you know, what is, what a present coverage is based on the existing candidates we have, and then what the proposed coverage is going to be with the new candidate that we are proposing. So that I would consider to be the data. Do you have any specific in mind? Because that is considered data, actually.
It's difficult to understand. I know one of the questions that was asked previously was requesting the data and the facts showing that there was a lack of coverage and that...
Yes, ma'am, that's what I said.
Would resolve that.
The, the propagation maps are, are the data that shows that there is lack of coverage. That is the purpose of the propagation maps.
The question I have, and I'm not sure it was answered to your question, is where's the data that proves it has to be 80 feet?
So the propagation shows you that 80 feet, that is the coverage we have. So that is the coverage we needed, 80, that is the coverage we want, that is the coverage that is going to be required to fill in the gap, which is at 80 feet. And initially, that we wanted to be at 100 feet, but in the light of interest of compromise, we said we can take 80 feet.
And there's no evidence that 50 or 60 feet would provide similar coverage?
So any direction in height is usually a compromise. So, I mean, the laws of physics are pretty stringent when it comes to coverage. I mean, I cannot change the laws of physics. So you need, for wireless to propagate, to operate, you need some sort of visibility, not completely visible, I mean, but you need, you need the signal to be propagating at a higher level, not at a lower level. And given that, you know, there's a lot of terrain over there, there's a lot of undulations, ups and downs. So in any lower fee, as you keep going, the lower fee, what happens is you're going to keep, keep creating holes.
Seems like we have ships passing in the night. At the last meeting, did you show us a coverage map? And for what height tower was that?
That was at 100.
100, and, and today you showed us a coverage map for 80 feet. So I think what I'm hearing from the other Commissioners is, do you have a coverage map for 60 feet? Do you have a coverage map for 40 feet? And can you put all four of them up on the board so people can look and, and have a quantitative answer rather than a qualitative answer to their question?
I have not prepared that, but this can be prepared if required, so, yes.
Thank you.
Sure, sure, sir.
My question is, is, excuse me, sir, but back to here. There seems to be difference of opinion on the map that shows where the towers are at, where the tank's at, and the height, and the distance from the tank. Are we looking at 100 feet from, and what I'm talking about is the tank itself, 100 feet from the tank or 400 feet from the tank? Are those contour lines one feet, 20 feet, five feet, what?
I honestly don't have an answer to that question, sir. I can look into it, absolutely, but I do not know.
I would like to have that information, you know, because this is what we're looking at in our contour maps here.
Maybe Tammy can help on this. Maybe not. We can look it up for you.
I can provide the... This is from their initial presentation, shows the contour, shows their own footage markings, and the proposed tower site, shows the footage here. The wood for customers. And this is the tank here, and then this is the, and it shows 5745 at the proposed tower, and 5755 at the line that's surrounding the water tank.
So was that an answer to your question?
How much, without calculating here quickly, do you know how much the difference in the height between the bottom of the tank and the bottom of your proposed tower?
Not at 80 feet, I don't. I don't, I don't have that information, I apologize. I can get that for you, though.
About 10 feet.
There you go.
We're going to this map to Jackers, 10 feet.
Ted?
In your early presentation, you talked about you had contacted Prescott Police and Fire Department. Did you hear back from either one of them?
I, I only heard back from Yavapai County.
So you, you checked with CAFMA and...
Yes, sir.
The county sheriff of Yavapai?
Yes, sir.
You did, what'd you hear from them?
All I said, they have no... All I said, they have no objection to the project, is all they said. They didn't, they didn't talk about FirstNet or anything like that. They just basically said.
I think you talked about painting the tower.
Yes, sir.
But earlier renditions was to camouflage it by looking like a tree. Is that still the proposal?
We went to the monopole based on some conversations that I had with planning staff and with other individuals stating that they would prefer a monopole over a monopine, but.
To your question, that proposal is still on the table, sir. We can do that.
That's what I was about to say.
So if, if the general consensus was camouflage, you could camouflage it. Thank you very much.
Yes. There seems to be some confusion regarding FirstNet here, like that city of Yavapai, you know, part of the first newer town is not using it. So just so that we have an education here, we have a FirstNet person who can talk about it. We just want to let you know in two minutes what exactly the FirstNet program is, because the FirstNet program is not something that is necessarily confined to the city. The FirstNet program itself was created as part of the 911 Commission that went into the drawbacks of how the 911 happened, not how the 911 happened, I'm sorry, that went into the drawbacks of why the FirstNet responders could not coordinate among themselves when they did the rescue activity. So one of the things that the government proposed was they need to be a network that where all the FirstNet responders can talk to each other and coordinate. So, I mean, right, a lot of federal agencies are using it. So even though the city of Prescott or city of, county of Yavapai may not be using the FirstNet program, a lot of federal agencies are using it. Do you want to, do you want to explain further?
And I'll make, I'll make it real quick. My name's Rich Johnson. I'm a Senior Public Safety Assurance Manager with FirstNet. And so just real quickly, what Anil was talking about is while City of Prescott PD and Fire are not on FirstNet today, there are jurisdictions and disciplines throughout the state that are different disciplines, PDs, law enforcement agencies, fire agencies, other governmental agencies that are on it. And this would increase their coverage capabilities in that given area. And so across the nation, we have over 5.3 million users of FirstNet that are representing over 26,000 agencies. And in the state of Arizona, there are quite a few. And so just providing some clarity to it, as while City of Prescott PD may not be on it, other agencies coming to support certainly are. Any questions?
I have a comment about the use of first responders. If I understand right, the City of Prescott Police Department manages the 911 centers for most of the communities around here, other than the Sheriff's Department, including ambulance service. And my question was, did we ever hear back from them as far as whether they felt this was a problem not to have the tower in terms of the 911 capabilities?
In talking to the Prescott Fire, everyone's on Verizon. So an AT&amp;T tower would not help their existing service, but as AT&amp;T increases their coverage in the area, which they're working on doing with the, with the new towers, then that, it is something that is a possibility they may, in the future, decide to go to that. But right now, the sheriff and the Prescott is all on Verizon because they had the best coverage in the county at this time.
Any others? I have a question for the commissioners here. Do you feel you have enough information right now to be able to vote? Or is there additional information you feel you need to be able to make a decision?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to answer your question, and I'd like to afford the opportunity to talk to the public. So what, what do you want first?
Let's give the answer to everybody.
Based on all the input from the residents, there's, there's a series of questions, but one of the questions relates to what is coverage based on 180, 60, and 40-foot towers? Now, I think that's an important question because there's two questions out there that, that I, honestly, I struggle with. One is, don't put the tower there, put it somewhere else, but we don't know where someone else is. And we all know, the lower the tower gets, the more towers you need. So there's a, I think there's a viable argument, one tower versus two or three or four towers based on height. So I think what the public's asking is, what's your coverage from 180, 60, and 40?
Other questions? Tom?
Mr. Chair. Point of person for a privilege, I'd just like to say one thing. Would you allow me to talk for a minute?
Go ahead. Out of everybody attendance to this meeting, the public, nobody has recommended that we move forward with this. Nobody. We had a person at the last meeting that said he represented the fire and rescue. He said it would not add anything to their coverage. And so many questions were asked of this, of this planning board to AT&amp;T, none of, maybe two were answered out of 20. So we're not getting the information we need to understand the consequences of the situation. And I would hope that, and then some of it's erroneous. So I would hope we'd get the right answers before we make a decision. Thank you. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This reminds me of my son when he was a little guy. He liked cream corn, but he wouldn't eat it. And I think, I think it's fair to say that most of us would agree that a robust cell coverage in this town is a desirable thing. But nobody wants a cell tower in their backyard. So I'm ready to vote on this. I've heard enough. My personal belief is, is that, is that this proposal is not the most, or the least intrusive solution.
Other commissioners, are you wanting more information or would you feel comfortable voting on this? We'll start down the road, Susan, then down this one.
I'm not really comfortable voting on this at this time. I don't feel that we've gotten the information that was requested earlier.
Well, I guess I'd like to know what the height of that existing tower is, because from an aesthetics point of view, it's going to make a lot of difference whether the new tower is twice as tall or whether the new tower is 20 feet taller. And then, because if people are looking at the existing one, and it's been there for a long time, I don't really see where it's going to be, make that big a difference. But if it's only, if it's only 20 feet taller instead of double the size, I think that makes a difference.
Tom, too. Yeah, I have a question. I mean, the, one of, there's been a lot of contradictory testimony. There's no question about that. The one thing that's stuck with me, though, is the real estate values are going to be affected by a cell tower at this location. There is already a tower at that location. So is there a additional detriment to real estate values than exists right now? So the question comes up is that. And I'd really like something other than a Realtor to be able to answer that question. I mean, I need, I would need some hard data in that regard. And that would be something that would be important for me.
Ted?
I was the first to answer that question.
Jim?
Regarding the comment on real estate being that I'm a Realtor of 17 years here, and I've been involved in almost 100 million in sales, I can tell you in recent years that there is no doubt among Realtors that we all are, not, I won't say all, but many of us are witnessing the fact that there is a definite decrease in value when we are too close or can see either a cellphone tower or power lines. But, well, let me finish. We don't, to the best of my knowledge, we do not have any study from an independent party, for instance, our local association, that can verify across the board that this is something that happens in every case. So I understand what you're saying with that. That's just a comment that I wanted to make.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. The real question here is, there is already a cell tower there. Will an additional cell tower?
Well, I think the concern is the height. When I'm working with clients, and I've had listings where we've lost a lot of money on a sale because of heights of, not necessarily the cell towers, but the height of power lines. I think the question is, how will an 80 to 96-foot tower impact values versus a 35-foot tower? It will probably, on my opinion only, impacted at a greater amount than a shorter tower.
I, too, have some additional questions versus voting on it now. I would like to know what the height is of the existing tower, what the height is of the tank, and how that would compare to your proposed 80-foot tower. And along with that, I'd be interested, I drove through Southview to get an idea of what this would look like. I drove down the highways around there, too, to get a view of this. How many homes in Southview would see these towers or this tower? When I drove through there, I found approximately two homes that could see the existing towers. I may have missed that because I didn't go down every street. I went to the ones that were closest in that area.
I also did that. Okay, did exactly the same thing, so.
And I would imagine most of the commission members have taken a drive through that area, too, because that's what we normally do.
Mr. Chair?
Ted?
Can I make my comment now? I think what you're hearing is we're going to postpone any decision today. What I'd like to do is give you some experience, the five years I've been on the planning commission, because this is, I think, the third, no, this is the fourth cellphone tower. One was up Taylor Hicks, that was a no-brainer. One was the 84-foot one on Willow Creek. And one that's most similar to what you're concerned about was Yavapai Hills. The proposal was to put a cellphone tower next to a water tank that already had a police antenna and a fire antenna, except this tower was not going to be 80-foot tall. I think it was going to be 35-foot tall. You remember?
It was higher than that.
It was, well, it was higher than that. But the objection on the part of the neighborhood was, it's going to affect our real estate values. And of course, this one, the one that was proposed, was right off somebody's backyard. This tower is either.
It's over, it's over 1,400 feet from any property line.
Well, so.
Over 1,400 feet.
That seems to be a point of contention, but somewhere in the vicinity of 1,400 feet from the property line. Now, at the beginning of this meeting, I said, if I was a politician, I'd find a reason to call in sick today, because every time we get into a cellphone tower discussion, it's contentious. And, and we know that. But the other thing that we also have to consider is the element of safety. If you can't get a 911 call out, that's, that's a concern that we have. That's what we addressed in Yavapai Hills, that's why we addressed in, in Willow Creek, and we addressed at Taylor Hicks School. That's important to us. So we hear everything you're saying. I want to kind of commend you today. You, there were a lot of people that stuck to the subject. And, and my admonition is always, you can attack the subject all you want, don't attack the person. And for the most part, we did pretty good today. So I wanted to share with you some of our past experience on cellphone towers, some of the considerations, some of what you share with other proposals, some of what you don't, and the kind of things we consider before we make a decision. So thank you all.
I want to clarify one more point. Jim Kloszuski, for the record. My concern in terms of voting today has nothing to do about my comments about real estate values. My concern is about coverage and 911 coverage. And my question is, how much more coverage do we actually get to support 911 on an 80-foot tower versus a 35-foot tower? And there's been no proof to show on a coverage map how that may impact 911, to what degree.
So I think overall consensus, if we want to defer this to obtain additional information.
Thank, thank. May I make a statement? Just amending something I said earlier on this reasonable time restriction. In 2009, the FCC created a shot clock rule, which says for new towers, it's deemed reasonable to have acted upon them within 150 days from a final submission or a final application. So I just wanted to give you an idea of the timing, knowing we were coming into the holiday seasons. I think we'll be fine. It's five months of time, but just so we're aware that a final decision should be made within that time.
We would be looking at the first meeting in December, because we don't, do not normally have another commission meeting at the end of the November.
It'd be December 14th. December 14th.
How does that fit into the timeframe?
I'd have to pull up when they submitted their application. We did request additional information to have a complete application, so it did take them a month or so to get that to us, but we'd have to look, because we may be coming into that timeframe. Give me a second, I can pull it up.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment? I'm, I'm struggling with this, and I'm repeating myself in some cases, but you started off with 100-foot, and that didn't go real well. You came back now with 80 feet, and that doesn't feel like that's going very well either. And so now we're, we're talking about two extra carriers on there. You know, what, what do they need to be effective? So if you eliminated those two, what would you really need? So, so I, I see this as a, as a ask for 1,000, take 500, and spend 250 kind of deal. So I think there's a bit of disingenuousness going on here with you guys. What do you really need? And I don't think you've told us that yet.
Did you get the timeframe, Tammy?
My computer's frozen up right now, so no.
Mr. Chairman, in the, in the, in the interest of time, we could make a vote, and since we're not the deciding body, we're making a recommendation to council. And we could caveat that vote, that the information that we're looking for be included in the presentation to the city council. So that, instead of it coming back to us, if time is an issue, then I think that we could make a recommendation that requires certain information and move this thing down the road just a little bit.
Our, our job is not to pass the buck. Our job is to make a decision and give our best technical information to the city council. And we don't have all that information.
I think one of the main factors here is our time factor.
Well, they submitted it April, so, and then we probably got the rest of the information, I think, in May or June that we needed, so.
So June would be our date, because it wouldn't be when they submit.
Brown that, May, June.
Full information we need to be able to review is that, right, Matt?
And then we send it up for review, and we got all the information that we needed from our reviewing agencies, which everyone signed off, said it was okay to move forward at that time, so.
And I know the FCC sets out rules in the Code of Federal Regulations, and in 14, they came up with this idea of when does the time start ticking? And it's upon final application. So Tammy, do, do we have a final application? Do you know what the date is?
It was like April 9th is when they submitted an application. We were waiting for authorization from the State Land Department, so, to finish the application. And it was probably about May, I think they got that to us.
Yeah, and I, I assume, and I'll allow you to inquire of the applicant whether or not they would voluntarily extend that time for additional review, or if they want us to kind of move it forward and make some decisions.
Sir? Would you be willing to come back on the December meeting, or do you want to have a vote now?
We are willing to come back on the December meeting to provide, to have the time to provide you with all the information requested today.
Thank you, sir. Do you have the full list of the questions that we have and understand what we want?
I do. I have written those down, but I'm, I'm sure Tammy will also provide me. She is very good at providing everything that you guys have asked.
I'll go ahead and make sure I have this. There was three. One was the coverage for the different heights, for 100-foot, 80-foot, 60-foot, and 40-foot. The height of the existing tank and tower, and then how many homes can see the tower in Southview.
Tammy, what was the second one?
The height of the existing water tank and the tower. The other four questions, they did address, and I wrote it up in my staff report, I think there was some confusion about the disclaimer. So one of the questions you had asked, and I just wanted to clarify this, just to have it on the record, was that the search and rescue guy provided a propagation map for you guys, and there was questions about that data. So the disclaimer that everyone's referring to is actually response to the website that that gentleman got his data from. So there isn't something on their data that says, the disclaimer, that was on the propagation map information that was provided to you at the last meeting, where you asked about where that data came from. So, because there was the four questions, the alternate sites, which is still you guys have questions about. On the coverage maps was, for data or top coverage, they said it was for both. View the coverage maps provided with an explanation, and they gave you an explanation, it was in the staff report and in their updated narrative. And then requesting information from fire, police, and sheriff, and we did talk to fire, and they are all on Verizon, so they can't answer any questions in regards to the cell tower will help them, because they're not on AT&amp;T. So, but then we have the three new questions we can address with the new information.
Are those all the questions that we want to have? Now's your time.
I just have one more comment that nobody has ever talked about here, is that if they limited that tower to 35 feet, they don't have to be here to talk to us.
Correct. And it can go on top of the hill. It can go anywhere on the property with no comments.
Is there a motion to defer? Excuse me, sir.
Getting back to the actual design of this facility, would the preference be, if we get to that point, go back to the tree design, the monopine, or do you prefer a monopole? Just going to want to make that distinction now, so we don't have to deal with it later.
Oh, I think the answer's not no, it's hell no.
Okay, all right, there you have it. Thanks.
Okay. Ted?
Ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
And Tammy, you need to help me with this. Do we want to continue this to the, I move that we continue this meeting to the next December meeting.
December 14th.
Corrected, December 14th.
You have a motion, is there a second?
I second.
You have two seconds? Any further discussion? Sarah, call.
Commissioner Gambosi.
Approved.
Commissioner Graham.
Approved.
Commissioner Riley.
Approved.
Commissioner Whiting.
Approved.
Commissioner Hutchison.
Disapproved.
Commissioner Kloszuski.
Approved.
Commissioner Michaelman.
Approved.
Passes 6-1.
So we will be reviewing this again on this, and if you would like to come back and participate, you are welcome to do this on that. Before we adjourn the meeting here, is there any staff updates besides a promotion of a certain person?
So we, the City of Prescott Community Development has been acting under an interim community development director, and as of the other day, Chelsea has now been given full time. Yay!
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I'm happy to be here and happy to serve at the pleasure of the city manager's office and city council, and here to support you best way I can, and look forward to the days ahead.
We look forward to working with you officially now.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Before I adjourn the meeting, this is, ma'am, no, we're done with this right now. Before we adjourn the meeting, this is my friend Ted Gambosi's last meeting here as a commissioner, and I want to thank Ted for all his effort over the years of what he has contributed to this commission. As you can tell, he has knowledge of the subjects when he comes in, he's prepared. He asks tough questions at times, but there are thoughtful questions on it there. And we are going to miss his presence on the commission here, but I believe he's going to be bringing this to the city council on his normal way of acting on that. So Ted, thank you.
May I say a few words?
If I said no, you probably would anyway.
I would, yeah. Well, I wanted to thank everyone. I, when I joined the Planning Commission, I think it was George Streets was the chair, and Terry Marshall, Mel Roop, Ken Maberek, and those guys were a font of knowledge. And I think for three or four meetings, I didn't say a word. I took in everything to learn as much as I could from them and from the staff, and I wanted to compliment the staff of the years we've worked together. We've undertaken some really tough initiatives. Cellphone towers are always tough initiatives, but the airport AVO was a very contentious initiative. And I learned a lot from staff, and I wanted to thank them and look forward to working with them in my new job. And I always, I wanted to thank the residents, you know, because we like to see this room full. I mean, you have, I use the word argue. People say you shouldn't use the word argue. I say I like to argue, because when I'm arguing with someone, you come up with a counterargument, and while you're doing that, I'm processing that information to see if what I'm thinking is right, or maybe I should make adjustments. So I wanted to thank the residents and also share with you, I got fired from the general plan last week, and I got fired from this Planning Commission this week. I don't know anybody's got fired twice in one week, so thank you all, have a great day.
Meeting adjourned.